Calling to order the Monday, February 4th, 2019, regular meeting of the 37th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Proton Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Dean?
Here.
Councilmember Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Henon?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman?
Here.
And Mayor Turbrack?
Here. Our first order of business tonight is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Henon with support from Councilmember Dean. Any additions, changes, corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Tonight's agenda has been approved. This time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. With us today is Deacon Dan Darga.
As I was thinking about our gathering this evening, I kept thinking about our national motto, "E Pluribus Unum," out of many, one. And so as we pray this evening, we pray for that unity. Blessed are you, oh Lord, our God, we give you thanks for all your great gifts, the gift of life, the gift of our family, the gift of our friends, but especially the gift of this community of Berkeley, the gift of our great nation. We give you thanks for those who lead us, especially those who lead us in this room tonight, for those who protect us in this city of ours, for those who serve us, and for our neighbors. Loving God, we ask that you unite us as we pray tonight for holy wisdom upon all gathered here. We pray for open minds, we pray for listening hearts, we pray for caring and loving decisions. And Lord, tonight, we remember especially those who go without, those who are struggling in any way, those who are suffering, those who are in pain. Lord, we pray confident that you are always with us, you lead us, and you guide us. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Will you turn the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You okay?
It is now time for citizens' comments. When you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda, councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City, please sign your name on the sheet provided on the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item while it is being considered, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Seeing nobody rushing up to the microphone, we will move on to our regular order of business. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approve the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 37th City Council meeting on Monday, January 7th, 2019, and the special meeting of the council on Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019. Warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1334. Ordinance number 00119, matter of considering the second reading of an ordinance to amend section 2-2 of Article 1 of Chapter 2, Administration of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to authorize persons designated as zoning officer, code enforcement officer, and building inspector to issue and serve appearance tickets for ordinance violations. Full copy of this ordinance is posted for 10 days at the Berkeley City Hall, Library, and Community Center.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Support. Moved by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Any corrections or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on our consent agenda?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Tonight's consent agenda has passed. We now move to our regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one on our regular agenda?
Recognizations, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing no recognitions or presentations, we will move on to item number two, please.
Oath of office, oath of office to newly appointed Finance Director Mark W. Pollak.
Okay. Would you like to administer the oath, please?
Please. Raise your right hand. I, Mark W. Pollak.
I, Mark W. Pollak.
Having been duly appointed as the Finance Director of the City of Berkeley.
Having been duly appointed as the Finance Director for the City of Berkeley.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
Charter of the City of Berkeley.
And that I perform the duties of my office to the best of my ability.
And that I will perform the duties of my office to the best of my ability.
Welcome on board.
Thank you.
Mr. Finance Director, anything you would like to say to the residents of the City of Berkeley?
Um...
You gotta come up.
Um, my residence is actually Clausen. I come from Clausen Municipal Government for 25 years, started in Lether Village. Matt and I have that in common. I already feel very welcome here. It's only been a month, but I commend your staff in the Finance Office, they've done a great job. Everyone's welcoming, and that's very welcoming, she's been great. And again, everyone I've met has been terrific, and I really look forward to being a part of Berkeley, so, thank you.
Well, thank you, and again, as you mentioned, for the residents that don't know, Mr. Pollak has been here for over a month, we are officially welcoming him today, but welcome to the City of Berkeley, and we certainly look forward to working with you in the future. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M0419, matter of approving the memorandum of agreement between the City of Berkeley and the Oakland Livingston Human Service Agency, OLHSA, for the Water Residential Assistance Program, RAP.
Is there a motion to approve M0419?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Henon with support, I believe, from Councilmember Dean.
Yes, this is true.
Mr. Baumgart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This program was started a couple of years ago when the various water groups consolidated into GLIWA, or the Great Lakes Water Authority. RAP has been in place, was put in place shortly thereafter. It's administered through, let's see, the Wayne Metropolitan Community Action Agency, but we'll be working with OLSA, OLHSA, the Oakland Livingston, was it, Human Services? And so Derek Schuler's been working on sort of bringing this program to the City of Berkeley. A lot of our fellow SACWA communities are also members of this as well. And in addition to Derek, we are joined by Ms. Barbara Jackson from OLSA and Mr. Jerome Drane from Wayne Metro, so they're here to explain some items to you.
Thank you, and just a little bit of history here, so Berkeley purchases water from SACWA, and SACWA purchases water from the Great Lakes Water Authority, formerly, more commonly known as DWSD. So Great Lakes Water Authority established this RAP program a few years ago to help low-income households pay utility bills. And it's meant to help folks get back on track, there is a finite period of time where this assistance can be offered, they have to stay regular on their payments, but the RAP program does allow for providing them some assistance. And so Great Lakes Water Authority budgets for this service as part of their annual operating budget, so that's sort of a little bit of the history of it. In my memorandum, I talk about some of the criteria here, and the administrators, who are so kind to have joined us today, Barbara and Jerome, might be able to talk a little bit about this a little bit more, but there is some thresholds that have to be met, and the administrators are the ones who go through that, so Berkeley doesn't decide who gets it or who's part of the program. We work with them directly because we'll need to be able to apply the payments to the utility bills of the folks that are involved in it, so you can see there is a relationship there. But as far as folks that are looking to become interested, they reach out to the administrators first, and then we'll proceed, if they can meet all the criteria, they can be in the RAP program. So many of our neighbors are part of this program, and so we're looking forward to also offering it to our citizens as well, so. Any questions? Myself, Jerome, and Barbara can help answer.
I want to thank both Barb and Jerome for coming here tonight. Do you guys have anything else you want to add or say that shine a little more light on this?
I think Derek sort of summed it up pretty well.
He likes to steal the spotlight, but we want to give you a chance.
But yes, thank you for allowing us to present before you this evening. Yes, so the Great Lakes Water Authority, which of course was established in 2015 as a result of the bankruptcy with the City of Detroit, established, of course, the regional authority which takes over for the Detroit Water and Sewer Department. Of that, there are 103 vendor communities that are part of the Great Lakes Water Authority, and with that, they are eligible to be part of the RAP program. And in that, the RAP program assists, as Derek had indicated, low-income residents with their water payments, up to $1,000 in payments, and for homeowners that may have higher-than-normal water usage, it can assist them with minor repairs as it relates to plumbing that's causing their high-water usage. And so, as the administrator for the Great Lakes Water Authority RAP program, Wayne Metro does the day-to-day administration for Wayne County, and OLSA does the day-to-day administration for Oakland County, and Macomb Community Action does the day-to-day for Macomb County. Those are the three largest counties that are part of the RAP program. And so, in doing the day-to-day, as Derek had indicated, individuals that may be interested would contact, connect, call us in a RAP line, which you have there on the flyer, they would have a mini-assessment done to verify that they are indeed eligible to participate in the RAP program. Once that is done, they will schedule an appointment for that customer to come in to OLSA at one of their sites to actually go through the entire enrollment process. Once that is done and they're successful with enrollment, then it will start as it relates to credits being applied to their accounts on a monthly basis. Does Berkeley, is Berkeley on a quarterly?
Quarterly.
Quarterly basis, so the customers will receive a $75 credit per quarter towards their water bill, and if they have arrears, they're able to receive up to $700 in arrears to pay down on their arrears as well. Those come in, in two installments, if you will, at the six-month mark, and then also at the 12-month mark. So if they have arrears up to over $700, they will receive $350 at the six-month mark and $350 at the 12-month mark. And Barbara does not have this information yet, we were just approved for a design change, program design change in the RAP program. And this program design change would, instead of a customer receiving their first arrears at the six-month mark, they would have received their first arrears at the one-month mark.
Nice.
Yes, so that's a program design change that GLIWA approved at their last board meeting. So an individual enrolls, they're successful, they have arrears, that first month, they would receive up to $400 towards their water bill with the $350 on the arrears and the $25 credit, I'm sorry, $375.
Sure.
And then the $25 credits will continue through the remainder of the year, and then at the 12-month mark, they will receive that balance of up to $350 for that.
Excellent, thank you.
Yes, so...
Option one, I think, is the option we're looking at because of the higher dollar amount.
Okay, alright. And so, you want to go over the...
I never give up the opportunity to talk in a mic, so. Like everybody said, my name is Barbara Jackson, and I am the program manager for RAP, so I will be the one that the community will be working with. And basically, once you have opted in, and being that if the clients are eligible for the program, we sign them up, and then every month, I will send you an email with all the ones that signed up for enrollment, and then what Berkeley's job would be is to communicate with me if any clients miss two payments. So one, we'll let them slide, if they miss two payments, I need to know that because they need to be taken off of the program once they miss, because that's the way how the program is, they can miss one, but they can't miss two payments. Then they have to be removed from the program after they miss two payments. So constant communication needs to be made back and forth. And basically, every quarter, I would make sure that the payments get sent of $75 per quarter. And the site locations, when they call the call scheduler number, and they put in the zip code, and it will send them to the closest location. The closest location here would probably be Madison Heights, or either if they would like to come to Pontiac, because we have mobile sites, and one of them is Madison Heights. We have the City of Novi, we have a couple of them in Pontiac, we have one in Holly, so it will take them at the closest location according to their zip code. And basically, if anybody would have any questions, if any clients have any questions, or, you know, they could just call, call me, and I'll be glad to ask any questions. Does anybody else have any questions?
Let's see.
Sure.
Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you all for being here tonight. Derek, thank you for helping coordinate on behalf of the city, and thanks to you for the service that you provide, not only to Berkeley residents, but those across the county and across the region. Thank you for your leadership with that. A couple of quick questions. If somebody doesn't have a copy of this flyer in front of them, what phone number or website would you recommend that they reach out to?
Actually, we actually brought extra copies to make sure that you can give them, so you can duplicate the copies.
So for those watching at home that don't have a copy here in the room, could you just share that?
We can, we can, we have extra copies.
Just kind of read it out, so folks aren't watching it on TV or something? Everybody get your pencils ready, here we go.
Okay. So that phone number would be 313-386-9727. And like I said, when they call this number for this information, and then they'll put in their information and their zip code, and they'll guide them to the nearest location that can service them.
Excellent.
So we do have extra copies here, so we're going to leave you with copies.
Great.
And we do have our cards here, so if anybody have any additional questions or concerns after we leave tonight...
Nice. And the payments go directly to the clients, and then it's coming up on...
No, no, no.
No, it goes to the city?
Directly to the city.
Okay.
No payments go towards the clients, because once they come into one of our offices to get assisted, and on what they need to have, they need to have a copy of their ID, they need to be at, their income needs to be at 150% or below of the poverty threshold, provide proof of residency and income for the last 90 days, and if they're a renter, they need to have a proof, they need to have their lease. If they're owner, then we can look that up if they are an owner, and they must stay current on their monthly bill payment in order to remain on the program. And the good thing about it is that once they remain, once they completed, successfully completed one year of the program, this is a two-year program, so they can re-enroll for a second year. So if they haven't got all their, that bill paid, they can re-enroll again for the second year to get some additional help. Or even if they would like to still re-enroll, because the program is so wonderful, and they can still re-enroll for the second year, and they can get up to $300, and those would be bill credits, so they'll get $75 every quarter. So even if they don't have any arrears, they can still be eligible for a second year.
Great, thank you.
Okay? So like I said, if anybody have any additional questions after tonight, you can please call, okay?
Councilmember Henon, do you have a question?
Two questions, and this is a grant for the person, it's not a loan that they're going to have to pay back.
No, nope, it's not a loan that they have to pay back, no.
And when someone comes in to enroll, how long should they expect it to take?
Up to one hour, because, you know, giving us time to get all the information in, and we have to make copies of all three months of the check stubs, if that's what they have. So just giving us time and to answer any questions that they may have, too.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Derek, is this going to cause us any more clerical work on your end, or are we prepared to do that?
We are prepared. It'll create a little bit more work on our end, but I've already talked with our staff, and it's going to be minimal, so we're looking forward to working with them.
Okay, thank you.
Reporting back.
Alright, seeing no other questions. Again, thank you, guys, thank everybody for being here and for explaining how everything works in the enrollment process for our residents, and as you mentioned, you will be leaving information here, so if anybody watching at home does want the flyer, we'll have them in various locations throughout the city, and feel free to come pick one of those up. Okay?
And maybe possible to get it up on the website as well?
Sure. Yeah.
WBRK.
Thank you.
Alright. Thank you, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M0419?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to item number four. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M0519, matter of approving the appointments to various boards and commissions.
Is there a motion to approve M0519?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Councilmember Stedman with support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of appointments included in your packets for you today. The slates brought before you starts with the Board of Review, the appointment of Ms. Karen M. Smith with the term expiring July 1st of 2019. This is to replace Wayne Friedman, who stepped down from that board. Downtown Development Authority Board of Trustees, Andrew Agby, for a term expiring July 1st, 2022, actually a housekeeping measure. He was previously appointed, but there was an issue with recording it, so he wanted to make sure that he's on record of being, having been appointed to that board. Historical Committee, Ms. Heather Hames, for a term expiring July 1st of 2022. Jennifer Novak with a term expiring July 1st of 2022. And then also the Public Safety Pension Board, the appointment of the Finance Director, Mark M. Pollak, with a term expiring July 1st of 2022, replacing the previous incumbent of his position. Per the state statute, the city treasurer, in our case treasurer/finance director, holds a seat on the Public Safety Pension Board.
Councilmembers, any discussion on the candidates we have before us today? Councilmember Henon?
I have nothing with any of the specific candidates, it's procedural with, you know, Andrew Agby acting as a DDA member for a while, and that having been overlooked, and it, you know, brings to mind that the DDA was operating for a while with their bylaws not approved by this body as they were supposed to for quite some time. So I just want to emphasize we need to make sure we get those things done correctly.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Additional comments on any of our candidates? Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Your Honor, and want to thank the residents for reaching out and wanting to be involved with the various committees that we have. It's thanks to their effort, their creativity, and their dedication to helping move the city forward that so much can happen for our fellow residents and things, I want to thank them. In particular, the Historical Committee is happy to have two additional members, and there are additional seats available if anyone else wants to join the Historical Committee as well. Glad to have these folks on board and look forward to additional appointments in the future. Thank you.
Seeing no further comments, yeah, I would certainly like to thank these volunteers and all of the volunteers in the city. We have a few other vacancies on boards and commissions in the city, and even if we don't have a board or commission in the city, we have had great volunteerism recently, so you're better off getting your application on file soon, so we can make sure that we are able to get you in the spot as soon as one opens. Seeing no additional questions, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M0519?
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. M0519 has passed. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Presentations, matter of receiving a design overlay district presentation by Kristin Kapalansky, Chairperson of the Planning Commission, and Vivian Carmody, Downtown Development Authority DDA Director.
I don't need a motion to receive a presentation, do I? I think we're good?
You're good.
Okay.
Rock on.
Might mean my gavel, too.
Never know. See if this thing will work.
I can't see anybody.
Must be working, then. Is there a power button?
Cover?
Cover's a good question.
Reboot?
It's not turned on.
Is the power on the projector? I don't hear it making noise.
Yeah.
Bulbs are not lighting up.
We can just ring it without. It can get people without.
Yeah.
Talk amongst yourselves.
Maybe give us additional overview and context.
Visuals are so fun.
And set some situations, and we'll bring in some additional talent, so how many people does it take to power up a projector?
Just one more.
Is there a lens? It made a pleasant beep noise.
You know, we thought about doing some introductory music.
Yep. It's coming.
Now, I see your interpretive dance wasn't able to happen tonight.
Cold rainy day, fell asleep.
Not very easy for you guys to see.
It'll get better.
It'll get there. It's a dramatic fade-in, I think.
Kind of like us. We'll be fading out.
There you go, yeah. Look at that, it's like magic.
Alright, now, let's see if we can get this thing to work.
Yeah.
No, I think it's that, oh, wait, stop. Oh, no. It's not working. How does, it should just go, right?
The, is the screen changing?
Going, great. Oh, wow.
Have to give it the old...
Old-fashioned.
Click, you can hold that microphone if we need to.
Now, that's why there's two of us.
Oh, yeah. Subtle hint.
So we were asked to present to you guys, I'm Vivian Carmody, Kristin Kapalansky, just a little bit more in detail about the Design Overlay District and the Design Review Board as we get ready to have you guys look at the ordinance, which will be, I think, at your next council meeting. This is just a quick overview of the process, we'll go into more detail. You know, we created the design guidelines, we started those in 2017, they were completed in 2018, last fall. We started on the overlay district ordinance, it went through several reiterations at the Planning Commission, you know, next step, because they've moved it up to you then, will be the adoption of the design guidelines, approval of that overlay district, and then the next step, final step after that, will be the appointment of the Design Review Advisory Board. So, did you get it to work?
No, I thought maybe not.
We're obviously a finely tuned machine. So as I mentioned, you know, we started the design guidelines process in the summer of 2017, we had multiple interactive and, is that thunder?
It's dramatic effect for how awesome this is.
It's God speaking, he's telling you guys, no, just do it.
That's right.
So we had several robust public input sessions, some great online feedback, and in May of 2018, the design guidelines were completed, and we had a presentation by Norrie Winter from Winter &amp; Company, who was our... by Norrie Winter from Winter and Company, who was our consulting, consultant on that project. We did a joint presentation to the Planning Commission and to City Council, which many of you were at, when we went through kind of a deep dive of what those design guidelines covered. And we talked about next steps. And at that point in time, we did talk about several options and that most likely the option we would be moving forward with would be this design overlay district and the Design Review Board. Just to reiterate, why do we have design guidelines? Well, because they give us like a roadmap for everybody to understand what the expectations are for our community's vision. They're based on these design guidelines, this public input. We had business owner input, we had resident input. So they are there now to act as that educational and planning tool for our property owners, our developers and design professionals. How will they be used? Well, once again, they're used as guidelines to review projects that are coming up in the DDA district. You know, whether it's facade improvements, whether it's building expansions, whether it's new development. Now we have these guidelines in place that will be there for everybody to be able to measure their project again. There won't be questions about what's allowed, what's not allowed. It's clearly laid out. They're really, really thorough design guidelines, 114 pages of thoroughness. I'm sure you guys have all read through them carefully because they are compelling reading, at least for some of us who are into the design world. But just, just kind of going back briefly, I think that they'll also be a nice tool for our residents because they'll know what to expect. So it's not just that we're looking at, you know, business owners and developers, but our residents will be able to understand what to expect. The guidelines, Design Overlay District, will cover the Berkeley DDA boundaries, so it'll just sit on top of the same map that you see here. One of the things we had when, you know, the design guidelines were completed, we had multiple options for implementation. We looked at them all carefully. You know, we could have, there's advocacy, which is, hey, they're out there, but there's no formal review, they're just there, you know. Do them if you want, don't worry about it. Advisory Design Review where improvements are reviewed, but no compliance is required. Incentive-based conditional use, this is where, you know, if you want to get a facade grant, then you need to follow the design guidelines. Or if you're doing a certain kind of, you know, project, you know, to get extra points, maybe you follow the design guidelines, but there's still no overall authority that says, hey, these have to be implemented on a consistent approach throughout the DDA district. So the Regulated District, which is what we're talking about with Design Overlay District and the Design Review Board is the most conventional approach, where the overlay district is created with that formal review process and the proper due process. That's the one that was also recommended by Winter and Company for us to use, so I think this is where Kristin's going to take over.
And I'll move to the keyboard. Thank you. So I'm going to get into some of the specifics of how we approach the Design Review Overlay Ordinance itself and what that does for us as a community. So Vivian touched on this a little bit, but the Design Overlay District is really our best tool to implement the design guidelines. It requires that they be adhered to, so they're not optional. It paints a clear picture for investors to show that this is what we expect. And it also helps us at the Planning Commission know what we should be looking for in different types of site plans. Go to the next one, Vivian. So when we're looking at a design overlay district, one way to think of it is that it is similar to a historic district. It imposes an additional set of standards on top of the existing zoning standards. So we're not losing any of the standards that are in our current zoning ordinance. We're gaining the ability to add some additional standards to our design, both site design and building design. So when you have a historic district, the establishment of a historic district, a community imposes some additional standards of review over a set of assets that they deem unique to their community and that they would like to protect. With the Design Overlay District, in this case, we're protecting our downtown and the character of the downtown community. Any project that is reviewed against the established guidelines to ensure the character or of the area of the building is protected and preserved. The next one. So the Design Review Advisory Board would be the body that's going to look at the guidelines and look at a potential site plan and determine whether or not it's in compliance with those standards. They'll focus solely on the building and site design aesthetics of a project that are detailed in the design guidelines. So again, we still have our regular zoning ordinance standards that will be there, but the, the site design aesthetics and the building design aesthetic will be compared against these guidelines, which we currently have nothing in our ordinance to address in terms of landscape, facade, parking lot, design. We don't have a lot of standards to address those sorts of things, so that really gives us a good tool in this case. The Design Review Advisory Board would then make a recommendation to the Planning Commission and that Planning Commission could use that recommendation as part of their review criteria. The Design Review Advisory Board would be made up of a cross-section of development professionals, and that's been proposed to ensure a thorough and informed review. Those professionals are listed here, so we have a landscape architect, historic preservation architect, an urban planner, a real estate developer or building construction contractor, and then a Berkeley resident at large. Those would all be appointed by the City Council. That brings us to the Planning Commission. So once the board is established, they would begin making recommendations to the Planning Commission. Given that the Planning Commission's job is to confirm that a project has met all of our site plan standards, including the adopted design guidelines in this case, it's a big advantage to have a group solely devoted to going through that 114-page document and making sure that whatever's brought before us does meet those standards. As a member of the Planning Commission, I can tell you our zoning ordinance right now is, is a bit haphazard, kind of pieced together. It's difficult to make sure that all of the site plans comply with all of the standards in the various different sections of the ordinance. So having a group that would go through and make sure that these guidelines, which are crucial to the, to the development and success of our downtown are met, is a huge help to us on the Planning Commission. Next one, Vivian. So it's a little bit hard to read, but this is basically a flow chart that shows you how this is all going to work together. At the top, you have your property owner or developer, and then those three arrows are pointing to three different types of projects. So one of those would be new construction, and then we have building renovation, and then building expansion. So new construction would always go to the Design Review Board. The Design Review Board would fit in between the staff review and the Planning Commission review, so that's that one on the left. And then I think the next one is building renovation. So building renovation, we have a couple different options. So on the right-hand side there of the middle column, the building renovation, that would follow the same process as the new construction. On the left-hand side, we've got an administrative review process outlined. So in that particular case, I think it's facades that, projects that are not changing 50% or less of a facade would go through the administrative review process. So in that case, the Design Review Board, again, would, would come into play, but the Design Review Board would not be composed of the members that we talked about, it would be an administrative function. So the plant, Community Development Director and the DDA Director would serve as the Design Review Board in that case and help projects get through that administrative review process. Then on the far side, it gets into building expansion. We spent quite a bit of time at the Planning Commission talking about what would be the threshold for administrative approval. In this case, we finally settled on 500 square feet or 10% or less of the gross square footage of a building, and that would be whichever is the lesser standard of those two. That was comparable to some of the other communities in the area and even a little bit less in some cases, so we thought that was a fair standard for administrative review. In that case, the DDA Director and the Community Development Director would again act as the Design Review Board. And then the projects that were greater than that threshold would go through the regular site plan review process and the regular Design Review Board.
So next steps, as I mentioned, you know, we need to have these, the Design Review or the design guidelines themselves need to be adopted officially by the city. And then we need to have the approval of the Design Overlay District and the Design Review Board ordinance by the City Council. Then the next step after that would be the appointments of the Design Review Board members by City Council, and then we would also need to update that zoning map so that the overlay district fit within the DDA district. So we did, you know, as you know, we're going through the process of our downtown master plan and Lakota, the Lakota Group is our consultants on there, and this has been, they wanted to just send this letter of support. It actually goes on for a little bit, but they are strongly in favor of a design overlay district and a Design Review Board because of the way it facilitates the process and the way it ensures that we get the high-quality design and building that we deserve here in Berkeley. You know, we may just be a 1950s mid-century corridor district, but we're as special as any historic district because this is who Berkeley is. And the more we can make sure that we ensure that character stays true to who Berkeley is, then the better off in the long run our DDA district and our historic business districts will be. So we'll make sure that this PowerPoint is available to all of you guys as well as, you know, online for anybody else to see. But that kind of covers, you know, the, the whole process and where we are today. So, do you have questions?
Questions from members of council. Again, today we are receiving this presentation, so we want to get some questions before something does come to us. Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for making this presentation to us as a preview of coming attractions, so to speak. Looking to the next steps a few sides ago, what's the approximate timeframe for those types of things as we see the progression there through, you know, additional conversations, input, decisions and, and actions? What approximate timeframe are we talking for these types of things?
So ideally, the ordinance will come to you next month for your approval, and then applications to that Design Review Board would be taken. And hopefully within, you know, the next month after that, we could have those appointments made. And, you know, my, my hope would be by May, we have a Design Review Board in place and we're down the path of achieving, you know, quality design and facade enhancements in the DDA district.
Great, thanks. And you, you mentioned this, but just to, just to confirm the, the degree to which the Planning Commission is on board with this, they're excited about this, you see this is the benefit, can you add any final commentary from the Planning Commission perspective?
We spent a lot of time on this ordinance. It was probably three or four meetings, so we really had a chance to talk it out thoroughly. And it was a unanimous recommendation for approval, so we feel fairly confident that we've covered most things with the realization that if we need to tweak things, we can always come back and revise the ordinance if needed.
Right, thank you.
Additional questions, comments? Councilmember Henin?
First I want to clarify, I don't believe it was unanimous.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry, there was one no.
I like the concept. I have deep concerns with the method of that execution on this. Some of my things were answered and, you know, that, so I know which path that we're looking at, that these aren't optional, they're mandatory, and some of the design guidelines are pretty squishy. It's hard to say what is appropriately sized. You know, they're, if it were a recommendation and an advisory board or, you know, advising, hey, we would like you to comply with this, but you don't have to, if it wasn't mandatory, then that's a okay standard, appropriately sized, because that's going to be subjective. But when it now becomes a requirement and something that they can be denied over, that kind of subjectivity that are in the guidelines really concerns me. I have a hard time seeing how, for people that aren't getting administrative approval, this will speed things up. There's an additional layer of bureaucracy that they're going to have to go through. I have seen, I found two cities in Michigan that have design boards like this, Design Review Boards, Ann Arbor and Kalamazoo. There may be others, but those are the only ones I could find. One of them, their review board meets every week. If it was a body meet, and then their site plan reviews were done every week. If that was something that was done that quickly, that really does expedite things. But when we have another board and you may have to make multiple appearances, I don't see how that actually speeds things up. That seems to slow things down. And then my final biggest concern is the, who is doing the administrative approval? I think we need, if we have administrative approval, we need to specify that it's someone with, at least one person in there with professional training in the relevant sorts of areas to do that, so that we don't have any missteps and mistakes like we've had, even when we've had professionals.
Okay. Thank you. Additional questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, may I address some of Mr. Henin's concerns?
Sure.
Okay. So my mind was kind of going as you were talking, so I cannot remember your first point, but I'll start at the second and maybe you can remind me what the first was. So with the, the question of expediting things and making sure that we're, that we're running smoothly, something that the design guidelines provide that we currently don't have are any standards at all. So sometimes when things come to us at the Planning Commission, we do look at the facades and try to make sure that they're of a high quality, but we don't have any standards to compare that to. Items get tabled because of that, because we're, as a commission, debating whether or not if this is a quality material or not a quality material. This gives us something to say yes or no. You, you meet the box or you don't. One of the other things you brought up, can you remind me of your other two?
The first item was the, that the guidelines are a little squishy some places.
Oh, correct. So there is, the guidelines are a little bit flexible, I, I, I give you that. And they're that way so that we're allowed to look at sites that maybe are presenting something new and innovative and something different and say that, you know what, these maybe don't mean exact letter of what we're looking for, but they're, they're presenting the overall character and picture of what we want to retain in the community, and, and they meet the standards through that. There's lots of different elements that we're looking at as part of the design guidelines, and we're not saying that every site's going to meet every single item. It's a general recommendation of whether or not most of the elements on the site meet those standards. What was your final point? Because I think I had something to help with that.
The professional experience or training of the people doing administrative reviews.
So although the design guidelines are a little bit flexible to allow for some of that subjectivity in some of our reviews, they are clear enough, I think, that a Community Development Director would be able to look at that. There are elements that that person would regularly be reviewing as part of a site plan review, would be familiar with in terms of the zoning ordinance, and should be familiar with reviewing and, and able to state to the Planning Commission, not necessarily in an affirmative yes or no, but I'm thinking of the recommendation, and Vivian might have more to say about this, but I'm thinking of the recommendation more of, of a narrative as these are the elements of the plan that would meet our design guidelines. These are some areas where there may be lacking, and we, as a Planning Commission, could ask them to maybe bring their site plan up to those standards. And then when looking at all of the other site design elements, it would be up to us to weigh whether or not they've met a threshold that we think is sufficient to ensure the character of the downtown.
The administrative approval on the, you know, the little graph that you showed, is that, was the idea that is only for the Design Review portion, or is that for any site plan that would come before the site?
So when this ordinance comes before you, hopefully next month, there's actually three different separate ordinances. There's the larger Design Review Overlay Ordinance, which encompasses most of what we're talking about. But there's two other, I want to say they're more like cleanup items, and one of those does slightly change the threshold for administrative review and approval. And that's the one that talks about the, the 50% of any one facade. So at the Planning Commission, we've had a couple of things come to us lately that really could have been approved administratively. What they were changing was not all that drastic. We felt like it was an extra step that the applicants were, were having to go through. So we decided to tweak that a little bit, and we looked at some of the comparison communities around us to make sure that we weren't too out of step with those. I didn't necessarily want to get into this, but I'm just going to mention it briefly. I'm sure you all know the redevelopment-ready communities is something that we're going through right now. So as part of that, they encourage not only clarity for potential applicants in how your design process works and site plan process and all of those types of things, which this does provide. But they also try to push communities more towards administrative reviews and approvals. I don't know that we're necessarily there jumping on board 100% with moving farther and further in that direction, but this at least gives us a first step in getting there, and it's a baby step. It's, it's really not too terribly significant. We're talking about 50% of a facade. And then when you get into the building expansion, 500 square feet or 10% of the gross square footage, whichever is less, I believe that was a little bit below what Royal Oak does right now. So that was the standard we were kind of using for that and then jumping down from there. So, I mean, it's a five So, I mean, it's a five-by-ten addition. We had something at the planning commission recently where we looked at, I believe it was an addition for a freezer, and I might be confusing this with my regular day job too, but, an addition for a freezer, like, that doesn't need to come to the planning commission, a small, tiny thing like that, as long as it meets our site plan standards. I think it'd be fair to have approved administratively. And the design review overlay was, I think, a six-to-one vote. But I think the site, if I'm remembering correctly, the administrative ordinances that came before us, those were unanimously recommended. So the planning commission was happy with those standards and comfortable with that. Thanks for the opportunity to respond.
Sure. I think, just, you know, I'll reiterate, I'm really uncomfortable with subjective but mandatory standards. That seems a direction that is fraught with peril when an applicant can come, I met your standard, no you didn't, but there's nothing that can be measured against it. That terrifies me.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments? So I have a question. We've talked, I understand now, based on what you just said, Chairperson Kepalansky, regarding being able to be a little bit more expedient with the administrative side of things. What about the extra layer that gets added for full site plan approvals now with that, between the planning commission from the design, the committee, or the review board, I should say? What is the expected time for that, and how much is it going to increase the process from what we have right now?
I can talk to that. One of the things that, as Kristen mentioned, the redevelopment-ready communities wants to see, and this is one of the things that we'll be adding into that rather comprehensive flow chart, is the time that it'll take to move these projects through. And ideally, we've spoken about making sure that the design review process itself, you know, is probably a no-more-than-30-day process. So you get it to the design review board as quickly as possible. If it has to come back, we would try to schedule another meeting so that it all falls within that 30 days, so then it goes to planning commission. And because now planning commission doesn't have to look at the minutia of the design detail, that should actually facilitate that process. And RRC would like to see, now it moves into planning commission, you're there, you know, in planning commission 30 to 60 days. So where we have projects now that are going, you know, three or four months, as, you know, planning commission kind of sorts through the design details, or even longer, we've seen recently, upwards of almost two years, now those processes should all be expedited. You know, the thing, I think, that you know, you can look at, design review boards, like Lakota said, in their letter of, or their memorandum of support, this isn't something new. I mean, these things are used across the U.S. successfully in downtowns. You see design review boards, you see design guidelines, you see design standards. You know, when you're talking about standards, I want to refer back to just historic districts because the historic district commission also works off of guidelines. You know, they're guidelines. They're not strict standards that come out of the National Historic Trust, they're guidelines. And they're guidelines because you have to look at individual projects and have some flexibility. The other nice thing, I think, about our guidelines is that where it's important, they are specific. When they talk about high-quality materials, and they talk about, you know, setbacks and landscaping and things like that, I mean, they're pretty specific. And then in other areas, yes, you know, they're a little less specific because you do want to make sure that you have the ability to be flexible based on the design of that building and where it sits within the DDA district. So, once again, this is not something that is brand-new in the planning world. These things have been around, these overlay districts, for a long, long time, and they've worked very successfully. And we think they can be successful here, too.
Thank you. Is there anybody with us today in the audience that would like to comment on the presentation that we just saw? Okay. Thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, just one additional comment. The comparison with historic districts actually almost terrifies me even more. They're, have a notorious reputation for being hard to deal with and too hard to get your things through, and sometimes very subjective for what don't seem logical reasons. So, you know, that also scares me.
Okay, thank you. All right. We will now move on to the next item on tonight's agenda, item number six. First of all, thank you for the presentation. By the way, Kristen, Vivian, thank you so much. Now, Ms. Blanchard, would you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-0619, matter of approving the purchase of a Rosenbauer Commander chassis with a 104-foot-four-section aerial platform fire apparatus for the Department of Public Safety from Frontline Services Incorporated, 8588 Carter Road, Freeland, Michigan, 48623, at a cost of $998,294 from the Capital Outlay Fire Truck Account, 101310991001.
Is there a motion to approve M-0619?
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgarten?
Lieutenant Mr. Mayor, we've been discussing for quite a while the need to replace our fire truck that we have, it's with our public safety department, and this is the opportunity to do so. This, as you can see by the volume of the packet, is a very well-researched apparatus. Our public safety department spends, I can't even tell you, or can't even really gauge how many hours reviewing specs and trying to look, trying to see into the future on what sets our department up for the next three decades' worth of, you know, rising to an occasion that may come in the fire service portion of what our department does. We think we've settled upon that, included in your packet, as I mentioned, was not only the specs, but also some of the rationales behind why we're asking for what we're asking for, authored by our public service, our public safety department. So join us are Chief Kane and Lieutenant Miller to answer any of the technical details that you may have.
Chief, LT?
Good evening. I'm probably going to refer to Lieutenant Miller on the technical aspects. I will tell you that this was a group effort, there was a committee put together, and we're really trying to not just look five, 10, 15 years, we're trying to look foreseeable future. This is obviously a major purchase, so we want to get it right. So we took our time, worked with a very good vendor also, and we think we have exactly what we need to last us in the foreseeable future, both for our safety and the safety of our residents.
Tom Miller, you want to tell us a little bit more about this?
Sure. Our current needs are, we have a 1995 ladder truck. It's a 60-foot ladder. Height isn't always as important as the horizontal reaches as well. Currently, we can only go 51 foot from the side of the truck towards the houses. Probably 95% of the houses, we can't even reach to get up to them. So the extra length, obviously, is what's important. It's a more robust ladder. Initially, when we first started researching this about three years ago, we were looking for a similar-sized truck that we have, just with a longer ladder on it. Unfortunately, you compromise the water tank size. We felt that was important to have a minimum of 500-gallon tank on the fire truck. So this truck suffices that, as well as the ladder construction itself is a lot more robust, as I said, so you could have a 1,000-pound tip load. Conversely, right now, we're under 500 pounds, so one firefighter with all his gears on, you know, is getting around the 300 to 400-pound range.
Which one are you talking about?
The other. No other questions?
And what Lieutenant Miller is talking about in terms of the ladder, we want to keep people off the roof. We obviously don't want people on the roof. So we need to have, go ahead.
One of the things in the construction industry is lightweight construction, lightweight trusses, OSB instead of the eight-inch-by-one-inch-thick roof boards that used to be on the 1950s homes. With our current ladder, we have to get up on the roof to make ventilation holes. That's one of the options that we have to do tactfully. We try not to, depending on the type of construction. As well as the reach, we need the reach to get buildings like the Harvard Commons, three-story condos that we have now, we just simply can't get up to the roof, and sometimes we have to get up there, so it fills that need.
Another thing is, a stick cannot be moved with somebody on it where this apparatus can, the bucket can be moved with people in it. With the stick, you have to put it where you want it, go up there, if you have to reposition, you have to come back down.
As the chief indicated, one of the, you know, with the Oxford Park Towers, it's an eight-story complex, we could reach a majority of a place, depending on the placement of the apparatus. But there again, if we had to do rescues, some years ago, there was a large rescue, the Jewish Federation Buildings, West Bloomfield, and they had to bring folks down on ladders, which was very difficult labor, so this would be a lot safer mode of rescue. Hopefully, we never have to use that option, but it's a safer mode for us and them.
Okay. All right, before we get into Councilmember Blanchard's spec questions, any other, anything else we want to add, or any other pieces of truck that puts out fires? It costs a million dollars.
Yes, it's, you know, it's recommended replacement time is 25 years.
How old, you said the other one was 95?
It's a 1995, yeah. If we signed on the dotted line today, we're looking at about a 14-month delivery time.
So it's still over a year before you. Councilmember Henin?
Yeah. Question more for Mr. Baumgarten. It looks like we are going to be paying for this in full upfront for both the fire truck and the next item, the extension to the firehouse.
That's correct, sir. As we recall from a bunch of conversations, we talked about a number of different, you know, options for paying for this. Based on the results presented by our auditors a couple of months ago now, the, we finished contributing to fund balance at the end of the previous fiscal year, we're very comfortable purchasing this outright, utilizing fund balance.
All right. And then, one question, some people I hear sometimes say is like, why do we need such a bigger truck than we had before? But you put in your notes that the truck we have now was never sufficient, even when it was purchased in 1995.
Correct. It was undersized to begin with, it wouldn't have reached the roofs back then. And I think, like I said, the misconception is the height is what we're concerned about, it's not always that, it's the horizontal reach as well. So this will double our effective reach, so.
Obviously, we don't want to make the same mistake twice.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead.
Number of things I've already discussed with Lieutenant Miller, so I got it worked out after reading 174 pages of specs.
I appreciate that.
Corey, would you explain, this is also a calf-struck?
Correct. Yep. So it does have foam capabilities, as our newest engine that we have on there helps suppress fire. Basically, it breaks down the surface tension of water and penetrates to cool and soothe a lot faster to put the fire out quicker.
But we will also only be a Class A, Class A foam truck?
Correct, yep.
Not Class B. And that's important, very important.
I don't know what that is.
I don't either.
Class B foam contains PFOS.
Oh, we know that. That's not good. Yep, okay.
See how simple it is?
Yep. Thanks for breaking it down.
Some of the stuff we discussed earlier is that we're going to put a federal mechanical siren on this, and we have to check on one thing. On one of our trucks one time, when we did that, we had to put an isolated electrical system in because the thing drew so much power that it would cause computer problems because it drew the voltage down, and we had computer operating problems. We need, we're going to check on that. We've got plenty of time, we haven't had the pre-construction meeting yet, so that's one that's going to be addressed. And the other one, in the, in page 78, body section, page 11, we have no mention of blue lights. We're going to stay with blue lights, or we're going to, with some blue lights on?
We're going to continue with the red and blue lighting.
Okay. That, we have to add that into the spec yet.
Yes.
So, most of the other stuff is very Myers, that we've discussed most of that already. The engine spec is good, the transmission spec is very good, everything I've looked at, good job by the team.
If you look on page 15, it does come with floor mats, too, we made sure.
So, you know, you've heard some jokes about the specs on the fire truck. So we're dealing with 170 pages, roughly 170 pages of spec here. Just to give everybody at home a taste of what we've gotten to read, upper wing, front warning lights, this is just one little section, "One pair of Wieland Model M6 LED warning lights shall be installed on each side of the front of chassis cab, upper wing area. The dimensions of the lights shall be four, five, or four and five sixteenths by six and three-quarters. The driver-side warning light shall be Wieland Model M6R red super LED with color lens. The officer-side warning light shall be Wieland Model M6R red super LED with color lens. And each light shall be mounted with a Wieland Model M6 FC chrome flange." And then we move on to the inboard warning lights. There was a lot of information to try to go through as we were looking over this. The important things for most of us, aside from Councilmember Blanchard and probably Lieutenant Miller here, is that we need a truck that fits our needs, that's safer for our officers, and creates a safer Berkeley, and improves our ability to fight fires and enhances the capabilities of our public safety department. These things are not cheap. We understand that, and this is something that we have been budgeting for a little bit while now, knowing that it was coming, and we have finally now gotten to the point where we are able to entertain this motion. It is a very, very large, it's, you know, it's not every day that we approve million-dollar purchases around here. So don't take the joking about the specs here as anything other than 170 pages of, to most people, nonsense. That is very difficult to understand. But, Councilmember Henin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to build on that a little bit, and maybe Mr. Baumgarten can shed a little bit more light on it, but I think it's important to highlight again the financial aspect of it. You know, what's the benefit of being able to pay for it all upfront?
We are able, we are able to take advantage of vendor discounts by being able to purchase this outright. So it does come at a better price than what we would find if we were to finance this either internally or externally, so.
Thank you.
It was actually just over $23,000.
Yeah.
Are there any other potential discounts down the road that we can possibly get into here?
Not monetary. We could take a deferment as delivery, that would allow the corporation to tour the country with the truck for up to four months. They would throw in a couple frills, so to speak, that really doesn't make-
Some of those Wieland Linzer Red Six clear lenses?
Yeah, it doesn't make it any more functional than it already is.
Okay. So it's just, they would do that, and that's more of just a delayed-delivery situation?
If we chose to do that, we wouldn't take delivery for, like I said, another 45 months, and none of our warranties would start until we take delivery.
Okay. Councilmember Dean?
I do, two things. I do remember reading about any repairs, excuse me, that would potentially have to be done, and they would come on-site to do any repairs. In the event that there's a repair that can't be done on-site, they take the vehicle?
Correct. They would, they would come down and drive down from Freeland, pick it up, and take it up there.
And then what do you use in the meantime while that's, do you then go to the reserve vehicle?
We would go to a reserve vehicle. The intent is to keep the current ladder truck that we have in a reserve status until it's no more financially usable.
Okay.
Because as it ages, we do have incurred costs on that.
Sure.
And then, just as a side note, the company in Freeland, we're currently getting our apparatus serviced out of Midland, so it's about another eight miles from them, so they're a little bit closer.
Okay. And my other question is, what is tip load?
So if the ladder's straight out, the amount of weight it can take if they're fully extended.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for bringing this important item before us here. Certainly, it is a significant investment, but one that's been thoughtfully planned ahead of time and carefully researched. I didn't see the thing about how the ringtones, we can adjust the siren sounds through your phones and stuff, but I'm sure that's in the spec someplace, too. I missed that. But, seriously, as a follow-up to the question about the reserve vehicle and things, there are mutual aid agreements we have with our neighboring communities in the, hopefully non-existent situation where one of our trucks was unable to serve our residents. We have the agreement in place to make sure that everybody's safely covered, and we have the equipment we need.
That's correct. City Oak Park has a 75-foot ladder, and Beverly Hills has a 105-foot ladder truck. So they are at our usability of our resources. Just, Beverly Hills takes a while to get here, and once we have our fire apparatus parked in front of the fire scene, with all the hoses in the street, it makes it much more difficult for them to get in to be usable for us. If we're without a ladder truck, we know that going into it, we will make sure that we have ample space for them to come, so, and vice versa. We reciprocate our mutual aid quite regularly, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like everybody to know that we did physically look at a truck, very similar to this. We had the manufacturer bring in a truck, and we trained on it, and played with it, and ran the ladder up and down and all over. So we got very familiar with how it works and the basic functionality that we need, and it was determined from that visit that this truck is basically what we need. This one is a little- This one is a little bigger than that one, and this one has a basket on the end of the ladder, which is better for rescue than that one did. But the basic functionality, as far as setting it up, lowering the legs, automatic leveling, all that stuff was, was excellent, so.
As Lieutenant Miller said also, we really, we didn't go for thrills. Matter of fact, we have crank windows. We don't have power windows. It's an option.
I read that.
Yeah, he wouldn't let us get power windows. Yeah, it's more things that can break, you know, we want, we want this to last a long time, so, you know, we, we really tried to spend the city's money as wisely as we could.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Are there any additional questions or comments before we call this all on this, and then we get to what happens when you buy a big truck? Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hannon?
Yes.
Stedman? I'm sorry, Turbrack.
Yes. And now that we are gonna move forward with purchasing this truck, Ms. Boucher, would you please call item number seven on our agenda?
Motion number M0719, matter of awarding the Department of Public Safety Fire Hall Expansion Improvement Contract to Schaefer Construction Incorporated, 150 North First Street, number 100 Brighton, Michigan, 48116. At a cost not to exceed $275,000 from the Capital Outlay Building Improvements Account,
Is there a motion to approve M0719?
Motion to approve.
Support. Motion approved by Councilmember Blanchard and support by Councilmember Dean.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. As we discussed, the, the size of the truck that we, the city council has opted to purchase is absolutely necessary and is needed for the next several decades worth of protecting Berkeley residents. Unfortunately, the, the fire station that we currently have does not actually fit this type of vehicle. Different views and different forecasts on the size of trucks sort of limited when they built the fire hall the way they did, so now we just need to take the opportunity to expand the fire hall to sort of fits this brand-new vehicle. So it's in pursuit of finding a truck that fits our community, we also need a building that fits our truck. You have included in your packet the bids that came back. We did go out and publicly bid this work. Again, once again, our team met with various contractors, were able to do this type of work before selling upon a recommendation for Schaefer Construction, who I believe was represented here this evening, sir.
Chief?
Luckily, we knew, we knew the, the truck wouldn't fit in the station before we, before we even considered buying it, so we knew this is something we had to do. Kind of same thing, we did a, a team effort on what we need, you know, what's the basic things we need? The basic thing we need is room to fit the truck, and if you've been in the fire hall, you'll know there's very little room behind our two current trucks. So really, it's hard to fit those two trucks in there, let alone a bigger one, and there's really no room for anything else in there. So we're looking to go out as far as we can, which is about 12 feet off the front of the station, and adding a pedestrian bus beside there. If you've been in our fire hall lately, you'll notice there's a lot of lights out, too, because we've been putting off repairs, hoping this would happen, so we've been trying to save some money, waiting for the LED lighting to be a little bit brighter, and we could hopefully save some money on energy. So we're looking to basically rehab the fire hall. One of the problems, it's a 24/7 operation, going out the front, there's gonna be some issues with access, and we've met with, this is, by the way, Matt Vedder from Vice President of Schaefer Construction, came to, came to the first meeting with an agenda, literally, not figuratively. But, I mean, very well organized, so we know exactly what we need to do, and we're very confident we can work with Schaefer Construction to get this done as, as soon as we can and as economically as we can.
So as you just mentioned, Chief, it is a 24/7 operation that you guys tend to run out of there. So tell us a little bit more about what the plans involve and how long they're potentially, or their schedule to take, and how we are gonna continue to operate during those times.
We're looking for all the pre-work to be done, the design and approvals before the weather breaks. We're hoping once the weather breaks, we actually do the construction. The idea is to, and please pipe up if I'm, if I'm saying something wrong here, the idea is to leave the doors, the current doors on, as long as possible, so we can still, if we have to move the, the trucks out during, during the day, we can. There is gonna be some times, probably, we can't, we can't pull the trucks in at night, but as long as it's not too cold, you know, we can, we can make that work. And basically, Schaefer Construction's got experience, or I don't know if you're done with the fire station in Howell, or pretty, they've worked on a fire station in Howell, and they've done all the municipal work, so they're, they're used to that. So anything our people can do to save money, we will do. We, like, all the lockers have to be removed, anything our people can do, we will do that. You know, because this is not to exceed, we're hoping it comes in even less than this.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Vedder. Do you have anything you want to add?
I just appreciate being invited. These two gentlemen have been a pleasure to work with, and we're looking forward to a successful project.
And Chief, how long did you say the project was hopefully gonna be, start to finish?
We're looking at construction duration of the last 60 days.
Okay, it's a couple of months.
We'll have pre-construction efforts probably two to three months before that.
Okay. Questions from council? Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of quick ones. Chief, you touched on a couple of, or scratched the surface on one of them, but understanding this is not a full, complete upgrade of the entire building, which I know you probably wish for, but what sort of environmentally safe products will be utilized, or energy efficiencies that'll be realized as part of this project? And like I said, I know you touched on a couple, so I'd be interested to hear a little bit more about that.
I'm looking at LED lights, for sure. The, not really environmental, but our ply event, which is, we hook up to the diesel exhaust or to the exhaust of the trucks, we need to add a third one of those. We're looking at energy-efficient doors. We, we're fans of all glass, so people can see inside when they're driving by, that's what I do. So we're looking to do that, you know, if, if the funding will permit it. Anything else you can think of?
Facade materials are really gonna match what's existing. It's a, it's a relatively small addition, just over the threshold of administrative approval. From a facade perspective, we don't, we don't have a lot of options, so we are going to match what's, what's existing.
Okay, well, I'd highly encourage anything that might fit within that, that budget to be pursued. And then the second thing, how much of the projects or the pre and post-design and construction, do you expect that Schaefer would be fielding out to subcontractors? So how much was it, I guess, an idea in the Howell example?
So Schaefer Construction is a general contractor, construction manager. We do not self-perform any trade work.
Okay.
We manage the project, we have an onsite superintendent, and in this instance, we will be hiring and managing, leading the design team as well.
Okay.
Everything else will be subcontracted.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Additional questions, comments? Lieutenant Miller, do you have anything else on your note cards that you wanted to?
No, I know there was some concern early on if the truck would fit outside the extension and not block the sidewalk, so it's, it's tight, but it doesn't cost pedestrians to walk in the street, so.
Okay.
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for, for helping us understand what we need to do to house this new important asset, this truck that we just talked about. And I think you hinted it, so from a visual perspective, if you're driving along, could you kind of eyeball for us about how much further towards 12-mile this, this extension would be? You hinted at it, but could you just kind of reiterate that again?
Well, the, the overall extension would be 12 foot.
12 feet, yeah.
But that's from the actual existing door. We have about a four, four-and-a-half foot overhang already, so maybe another additional eight foot out from the roof line.
Sure. Yep, and then, and tangential to this question, where would the reserve truck be stored once we get the new one? Is it, does this room have four, three in here? Yeah?
We have three bays currently.
Perfect.
Currently, we keep our pickup inside there.
That's what I thought, yeah.
But yes, we would have just that third bay take over. So the new truck would sit in the center, be the easiest to pull in and out that way, so.
Great. Nice, thank you again.
All right, seeing no additional questions, thank you, Mr. Vedder, for being here. Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Lieutenant Miller, for bringing this to our attention today. With that, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M0719?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hannon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number eight on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M0819, matter of awarding forestry services contract to J.H. Hart Urban Forestry, 6600 Product Drive, Sterling Heights, Michigan, 48312, for a three-year period.
Is there a motion to approve M0819?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Councilmember Stedman, with support from Councilmember Hannon. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Including your packet is the, the bids that went out and the, the results of said bid, as well as a memo and justification from Public Works Director Derek Schuler. As you'll notice, we did have a couple of interested parties, forestry vendors bid on this project. J.H. Hart Company was the lowest bidder in this. We have been utilizing their services for the previous, at least, three years, and I've been very satisfied with their work, and so happy to see that they managed to be the lowest bidder once again, so. And then Derek has some more of the technical details for you.
Thank you. So our three-year term with Hart for forestry work expires later this month, so he wanted to go out to public bid again, and we did get three bids in for this work. And J.H. Hart was the lowest qualified bid based on those numbers, the summary sheet that the Clerk's Office put together on the second sheet shows that. So we've been working with Hart now for those three years. That was a change for us, based on the previous contractor, who was not the low bidder at that point. So obviously, anytime you have a change of this magnitude, this is something that we deal with on a daily basis. There is a tremendous amount of interaction via emails, work orders with Hart Urban Forestry, and I can say without any qualms that we've been extremely satisfied in, in the work performed and the level of communication that we have with them. Again, we're working with them on a daily basis for tree assessments, tree trimming, tree removals, all of our forestry needs. So it's been very successful, and we wouldn't be recommending going with them again if we felt otherwise. So we put out the bid. Again, we had three bids received, and Hart was the lowest bid. They work for a number of our neighbors and have for a number of years. They're very familiar with community forestry. Judd Hart, who's here as well, has been extremely active with the Tree Board as well, putting on workshops. He's done workshops before, he's been there as a resource relative to the ordinance, so they've been heavily involved with us. It's not just one piece. They're, they're the full, full-service company, so he's been involved in, in every aspect of it. So we're recommending another three-year bid award to Hart. The prices that you see in the bid document have increased over the last bid. I do think it's important to understand that, that they are holding prices for a three-year term, so the pricing that we receive, just like three years ago, they have to hold those prices for a three-year term. So I'm not surprised to see an increase, and now they'll be holding those prices for at least three years with us as we move forward. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Mr. Hart's here as well, we can answer any specific questions you might have.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Derek, would you comment just a little bit about Hart's response for emergencies? I know that we've had some response with them, and I, what I've seen has been good, but would you please comment on that?
Yeah, it's, it's really, it's really been exceptional. It almost seems like within minutes, we have a crew helping us out, and we've had some ice storms, you know? If anybody's watching the weather, we may have another one very soon, so we've already talked about that. They have, we've had a crew anytime that we've need them, and that is something that we didn't have before. And it makes me feel great to know that we have somebody that we can rely on, that can be here in a time of need, not just the usual stuff that they're here for, but when we need an emergency after hours, we have somebody that will respond and respond quickly.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember Hannon?
First, a couple of comments. I've worked with Mr. Hart on the Tree Board as a liaison, and the work there's been excellent, and I've been really impressed there. Also, with the crews, when they were trimming this summer, I went out and talked to them and, you know, made sure they didn't know who I was, and, you know, so they didn't, you know, fake anything, and they were, they were great, professional, they were, you know, they cleaned up, you know, it was great. And I also wanted to comment that not only is Mr. Hart the lowest bid, it is significantly the lowest bid. So I think we're getting excellent value with what we're getting. The one question, comment I wanted to have, you know, we've had people suggest that we have a separation of duties, that the people assessing the tree health be different from the people that profit from removing, you know, the dead and diseased trees, which we just have a lot of because of the stock of silver maples at the end of their lives right now. So I'm comfortable with what we have here, but could you maybe explain, you know, the costs and why we do it the way we do it?
Sure, sure, and Judd can chime in here, too, because I'm sure he might have something to say as well, but, so when, when a tree is determined that it needs to be removed, and many of them are the silver maples, it is important to know that, that it's not as though they just move and, and start that removal process, that, that our department, the city DPW, is involved in making that final determination now. So what'll happen is, is if Hart recognizes a tree that needs to come down, our foreman, Sean Young, is notified, and then he ultimately approves moving forward. So it's another set of eyes. We've talked about even something as simple as Google Street View, and we've using that, where sometimes you can even use that to see the holes in the silver maples. It's not unusual to even see that on something as simple as Google Street View. So we have a, we have a check and balance system. I'm not aware that Sean has ever not, you know, moved forward with a removal that has come from Hart before, but there is that, that, you know, level of, I guess, confidence that we're making sure that, you know, what needs to be removed is removed. It's been talked about, do you introduce another company involved in this process? And, and there may be rare cases, occasions where you might want to do that for some instance, but you'd be paying another arborist to do what, you know, essentially we're getting for free, if you will, as well, and, and I wouldn't suspect we'd have any differences on that, so, I don't know, Judd, do you want to?
Well, you know, if I could just expand on, we're not looking for things to do. And when I say that, when I say that, when you entrusted me with your forest three years ago, which a lot of you were on the council when you did that, I'd like to thank you for your support monetarily, as well as the support to the program. And the fact that I'm sitting in front of you today to ask you to do that one more time, I really appreciate it. So there's an implicit trust, and I've had the luxury of working with Matthew at Lathrop Village and Marque. I reiterate with you, and Derek, I would like to publicly say to you that you have treated me as a member of your staff since the day I started here, and the confidence and trust that we have in one another is stellar, and I have never experienced that with my other communities this quickly. And I will say that the residents that are out there that are watching this, I'm very thankful also for you, because I've learned that Berkeley is very huggable. The, the people in Berkeley are just nice, and we, we usually get yelled at a lot, because we're doing things that are different. And, and I want you to understand that we're not looking for things to do when I say that. I want you to, to know that, that we've got plenty of other things that we could be doing other than taking that tree down, and I, I love trees, so.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor.
I just want the people that are at home to realize that it's not some guy with a chainsaw coming down the street and whacking trees down. It's done by a professional and decisions are made correctly. And so, and then Sean gets into the game too. So it's a very rigorous process.
Councilman, also, it's not uncommon for me to, Derek would ask me to do a report specifically on a tree that would be problematic for a resident or a hazard to our public right of way. And I've had to do several reports to our manager, as well as Derek, and code enforcement to reinforce proper agriculture within our community. Our community, as long as I'm on watch, our sidewalks and our streets will never be in harm's way.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Judd, for being here. One, you have been very, your attendance record is stellar in terms of being at meetings and being at boards and commissions, so we certainly do appreciate that. Derek, you started off going over, you know, the specs, or not the specs, but the bids. And you mentioned that you were very happy with Mr. Hart and his company. And if you and your crew are happy with the job that Hart is doing, then I am inclined to agree with your recommendation on that. Adden, it was nice for you to get involved and certainly be here and be present and give answers to questions in a way that isn't clearly you just spinning some line. I mean, you're very believable and we appreciate that, so thank you.
As the health of our trees at heart.
And with that, seeing no additional comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll? Yes, sir.
Dennis, I haven't had a chance to really publicly thank you for all your hard work you did on the tree ordinance. It was a delight to work with you and you kept the lid on that cookie jar a bunch of times, and I certainly appreciated it.
I guess I'm gonna have to vote yes now.
Yeah, thank you.
And you know how to butter people up. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-0819?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Thank you both for being here. Moving along to item number nine on tonight's agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read that item?
Motion number M-0919, matter of approving the purchase of a 2019 tandem axle dump truck and truck bodies at a total cost of $325,577 from Bouverine Freightliner and Truck and Trailer Specialists Incorporated, utilizing the Mitten Cooperative Bid Contract.
Is there a motion to approve M-0919?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Proton with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgartner?
I think, Mr. Mayor, as mentioned, this is, we went through the Mitten Cooperative Bid Process. This is a budgeted item. We knew we were gonna be replacing a vehicle. I do want to point out that the vehicle this replaces was purchased back in 1997. So once again, we continue to get every single dime we possibly can out of the city's vehicles. Derek's staff does a great job of not only taking care of them, but also, you know, does most of the maintenance in-house. And our mechanic does a phenomenal job. And that's why you see us in 2019, just now having to make some of these purchases under our replacement plan. But as mentioned in the motion, we did go through a cooperative bid process for this. The information on that is outlined in Mr. Schuler's memo. And then also, the specs from Freightliner and Truck and Trailer Specialties are included in your packet as well. And of course, Mr. Schuler's here for any specific questions.
Mr. Schuler, tell us a little bit more about this dump truck, please.
Thank you. So this is what we call a hook truck. Swap荷是the name brand for it. So we have come to you before for a purchase of a similar unit. Essentially, what this is, is you can purchase a chassis and then you can put different type of bodies on the back, you know? Salt bodies, you can even put trash garbage truck-type bodies on these. There's a whole slew of things, dump bodies. So we're interested to try this out because we feel like we can make use of this. And in the future, we may be able to have less chassis than we currently have to maintain because we can put them all to more use. The salt trucks traditionally have sat in the garage during the off-winter months, and then they come back out come wintertime. And, you know, that's not great for a vehicle. You want to keep these vehicles going. So the potential exists for us to start utilizing these hook trucks more and having them be used more often. And they'll have to be replaced so often as well, but I think from a maintenance standpoint, it's going down a better road. And certainly, that initial investment, we can realize some savings of not having to purchase something that's sitting for prolonged periods of time. So we have purchased one of these before. We're still waiting on it. These vehicles take about a year to get, so there is quite a lead time on these. The chassis doesn't take too long to get, but the build-out of everything else takes some time. So this one will take us about a year to receive. So, but we've looked at these, we've tried them out, we've been on-site with them, and we're happy with what we see, and we're looking forward to using them. And then maybe in the future, this is gonna become even more of a norm for us as far as the heavy equipment, the dump trucks, salting trucks, even the garbage trucks that we use for curbside leaf removal. We could potentially buy just the dump bodies for those instead of having actual full vehicles because those garbage trucks are not inexpensive either. So I think we're going down the right path, and we're really looking forward to, you know, getting the first one and the second one and trying them out and seeing what they do for us, making sure that they are the right fit. But we feel very confident, other communities, Farmington Hills is one that has used these now for quite a long period of time. They've had great success with them. I never want to be the first one trying something out. These swap loaders have been used for many years now and have had good success, so happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments as we look at our next swap loader? Eventually, we will have two of them actually in the city.
Eventually, yes.
I went over the specs and I thought, John did a good job again with this, especially the accessories. I liked the Monroe equipment that you selected. That was a good selection because I've worked closely with Monroe many, many years ago, and they do make some good stuff. Everything looks good on it. I was a little concerned about your 28SI alternator at first, but I did some research. I looked at, pulled up the power curves, and I think it'll probably do the job okay.
Wonderful. And we are buying, with this purchase, there's a couple bodies that we're buying with it as well. And those are detailed dump bodies, some enclosure bodies that will give us more flexibility for doing what we do as well. So we're really looking forward to this increasing our flexibility on several fronts.
Thank you. Thank you for helping keep our infrastructure and the tools that our employees use fresh and modern and all that stuff. In terms of those various accessories and bodies and things, do we have the storage for those? How will those be accessible when the time arises to use or to swap out?
Sure. And so I would suspect some of these items, the dump bodies, for instance, will be stored outside. So essentially, what you would do is you have the chassis, and when you need to go grab this thing or that thing, you would just back right up and hook it up. And within literally seconds, that body is now a part of it. There's rollers and things that help load it up, but it's a very quick process. And I envisioned, you know, having those stored outside as well. So we feel comfortable we have room for that, those items, in our yard.
Excellent, thank you.
Any additional comments or questions for Mr. Schuler? Seeing none, as you mentioned, we have looked at the hook truck before. It does seem that it will provide practicality and efficiency for the DPW crew once they actually do arrive here. With these bodies that we have, how many bodies did we get the first time?
So I think we just got the salt body the last time. So this is gonna give us a couple more bodies for both of the new vehicles, correct? And I suspect we'll be coming back for additional bodies. I mean, the whole rear loader, the garbage truck concept, really sounds intriguing to me. So I'm thinking that that may be in our future as well because to be able to just hook on that body and use the chassis that we already have, new equipment, really sounds like a good thing for us, so.
Especially with the bodies we've looked at here ranging from $25,000 to $35,000 to $40,000 as opposed to spending a couple hundred thousand to get a whole truck.
Right. The chassis cost for these trucks just to get, you know, is about $100,000. So the other costs are in those bodies and the build-out for them, so.
Okay, thank you, Derek. Certainly appreciate it. And with that, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-0919?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number 10. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 10 on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-1019, matter of authorizing the mayor to execute a third-party specialized services operating assistance contract between SMART and the City of Berkeley for public transportation services primarily designed for senior citizens and persons who are handicapped. The contract period for this program is from October 1st, 2018, to September 30th, 2019.
Is there a motion to approve M-1019?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgartner?
I think, Mr. Mayor, we have our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. McCarleton, here, available to talk about this. I just simply wanted to note, as far as the timing goes, it's not uncommon for us to receive disagreement at this time despite the fact that it's...
Several months?
Several months, I won't quite say several months old, but this is the normal time to get it to us. It's, you know, by no fault of the city's departments or anything like that. So those that have been with us for quite a while know that this is, they're often delayed in getting their items to us. But Teresa, nonetheless, makes, and her staff makes phenomenal use of these, this relationship with SMART.
Good evening.
Good evening. So you see two SMART contracts come before you every year. First, there's municipal and operating, or community credits that come before you in the summer. And then this contract starts in October. As I noted in my memo, which the city manager just said, we did receive it January 16th, even though it technically started in October of 2018, and that is fairly typical. So this is the first meeting we can bring it before you. This is for specialized services. The amount remains the same that it has for the last several years, and this money goes to help us operate our SMART transportation services, as most of you know. But for the community, we operate three vehicles. The one that is used most often in our daily transportation is our diesel, which is our 14-passenger. We do have a larger bus for some of our trips for our senior programs, that's a 26-passenger. And then we have a smaller six-passenger van, which we are hoping to replace in the very near future. Our SMART, our transportation, senior transportation program has, in the last six months, been full every single day, give or take a couple days here or there. But it has been heavily used and growing. I'm not sure what exactly is to account for that. Though SMART did send out some information today that was interesting, that SEMCOG had put out talking about the growth of the senior population over the next seven to eight years. So this is a program that I see continuing to grow and grow. We always encourage our seniors to call as soon as possible because often, you know, we are booked out for a day for whether it's a doctor's appointment or a trip to the grocery store.
Thank you, Director. Questions? Councilmember Henon?
As the program's growing and we see the need for more growth, is this a need we might be able to help fulfill? And would there be additional funding from SMART if we did that?
It's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. I think that would be a conversation we could have with SMART. We also, in the past, were receiving a grant from Beaumont, but we no longer needed that with the expenses and the revenues. The SMART grant was, the SMART credits and grant were meeting those expense costs. So that's something we could look into in the future. That would entail having to have more than one driver a day, which would be something we would also have to look into, those costs, those costs for vehicle, those costs for staffing, and whether or not we would be able to manage something like that. So I think that there's a lot of things that would surround that, but it's certainly something, I think, in the future that we could look into.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember Blanchard?
Just a comment. I was lucky enough to be able to go to the senior luncheon and help with Ross, Gavin, help people get off the buses. And those buses came in there with a lot of people. We're really looking forward to a great job that Teresa did with the senior luncheon. But, you know, they got them right to the door and we got them inside. And it was great to see all the people that used that because three or four buses came.
Yeah. And Councilmember Dean as well, yeah.
Yeah.
We have two phenomenal drivers as well. We're very lucky. A lot of communities do struggle to find drivers. I have different communities contacting me all the time, asking if we have extra drivers. We do not, and we are not giving ours up. But we're very fortunate, particularly, I actually, just to share an anecdote, received a handwritten note today from one of our seniors that attended one of our trips two weeks ago with her husband. It was the first time they'd ever attended a senior trip. And she talked about how great going on the bus was, how great our senior coordinator, Dan McMinn, was, and our driver, and how this was a wonderful thing. They went to Phantom of the Opera and they had like front row seats. It was great. So, you know, it was just, something as small as that, but she took the time to write a thank you note and to me and to our department, that means everything, so.
Excellent.
It's a great service.
Yes, it is, it is. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Teresa, for being here tonight. Ms. Boucher, at that, would you please call the roll on M-1019?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Moving on to item number 11. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 11 on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R-0119, matter of authorizing the execution of the public unit master signature authorization agreement between the City of Berkeley and Flagstar Bank to provide the necessary authorizations for deposits, withdrawals, and other basic bank business on behalf of the City of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve R-0119?
Motion to approve.
Support. Motion to approve by Councilmember Henon with support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thanks, Mayor. This is essentially a housekeeping item. The Flagstar Bank, in order to allow Mark to utilize the full scope of his position, does require authorization from the local governing body. And they have the form that was submitted there with the resolution, it actually comes from them and is signed appropriately. We've done this with each of our finance directors that we've appointed over the last couple of years. You'll see, you'll note on there, the resolution outlines what the authorized signatures are, as well as notes that the, you know, any items per our city charter or checks go out, they also require the counter-signature of the city clerk as well. So not only does it outline the security measures that we have in place, but actually, taking this action itself is essentially a security measure as well. So again, we're happy to have Mark on board and happy to have him be able to execute the full purview of his position.
Does this have any impact on the internal control situations we've been trying to?
This is one of the internal controls that the bank puts into place, but there are other measures that we've discussed that happen sort of on a parallel track from this one.
Other questions? And as Mr. Baumgartner mentioned, this is basically a housekeeping item.
Very patient.
Okay. Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R-0119?
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. I think that's it. Will you now move on to communications? I believe Councilmember Stedman? Am I correct?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
You are up.
Okay. The library, of course, please look at the website. There are many programs being offered in February, and you might want to take advantage of them, especially over that four-day weekend that they get off school, or five-day, I don't know what it is this year. But you might want to take advantage of those. And beautification committee will not be meeting again until March because after the Holiday Lights Awards, there was really nothing to do during January and February. So our next meeting will be in March. And the Community Engagement Committee, our next meeting is this Wednesday. And I think we will be probably meeting back in the little room here, in the conference room, because I think we got displaced by the police academy in the upstairs.
You can fight him for it. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple of things. One, I'd just like to thank Teresa and her staff for the wonderful job at Winterfest. I enjoyed it very much. It was a good time and well organized. The second item is, doesn't pertain right now, but if you've got a fire hydrant in your area, keep the snow away from it. But nature took care of that today for all of us. So it's just a thing to remember, if you've got one in your neighborhood and you're able to shovel the snow away from the fire hydrant, so if we get there with a fire truck, we can hook up a little bit faster. So keep that in mind. Thank you.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of updates from committees as well. The Downtown Development Authority continues with the Coolidge Safety Plan that we've discussed at recent meetings. They've gone out for requests for bids and quotes and all that kind of good stuff to get the striping project. There's still several steps ahead of that effort, but at least it's continuing to be underway, moving that forward. And they're expanding the metric definitions and things like that per previous conversations. Also coming up on Thursday, February 28th, is the second Downtown Berkeley Master Plan Public Input Session. So this is the master plan portion that overlays on the downtown area. It's at the Berkeley High School Collaborative Center, again, on Thursday, February 28th, from 6:30 to 8:30, public input session to help continue to provide additional input and guidance on the downtown master plan. And then, there's a series of outreach to the businesses with the DDA in mind. The Marketing and Promotions Committee has a survey to get business feedback and ideas on 2019 events, things that have gone well and things that we'd like to do differently. And tomorrow, as a matter of fact, Thursday, Tuesday, the 5th at 9:00 a.m., the National Main Streets Center and the Oakland County Main Streets folks will be here on-site to do our first annual National Main Street Program Evaluation. So, Berkeley was recently added to the National Main Streets Program and this is their annual review to see how we've been doing and where we're headed and the kind of great progress we've made and the vision going forward. So, that's exciting. The goal is to hear from the businesses and property owners to see what's working well. So, lots of input opportunities between these two things here. And again, downtownberkeley.com is the website, downtownberkeley.com for all things related to our DDA. The Historical Committee continues to sell the newly-designed coffee mugs. For those of you that collect those or those for your first one, you're welcome to purchase those at the museum, at City Hall and other locations throughout the city to celebrate the city's past as we look forward to our future together. And the museum is open on most Sundays from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. and on Wednesdays from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And the Technology Advisory Committee, the group has been focusing on acceptable use policies, social media policies and some of those additional controls measures that we hinted at earlier. And they're reaching out to our other community volunteer boards and committees to see how they could better leverage technology in accomplishing their particular mission. So, for those of us as liaisons to various committees, if there's things that technology could help advance the agenda, streamline operations, make it easier for those members to do their work, reaching to the residents, the Technology Advisory Committee is here to help bring those talents and skills to bear. And finally, it was John Burrows who once wrote, "It is the life of the crystal, the architect of the flake, the fire of the frost and the soul of the sunbeam. The crisp winter air is full of this." Now, what he was speaking about was the winter weather. It seemed appropriate a week or so ago for that quote. So, when it does come around, certainly hopefully you can see the poetic beauty of the four seasons that Michigan has graced with. But do so safely to echo the comments, not only from public safety perspective in terms of the fire hydrants, but think about your pets too. If it's too cold for you, it's too cold for your pets. Please don't leave your cherished family, your furry family members outside for any longer than you'd like to be out there as well so that they can enjoy this weather as appropriate. With that, thank you much.
Thank you. Councilmember Dean?
So, a big thank you to the Junior Women's Club for all of their hard work and efforts for the, sorry, mother-son, father-daughter dances that were held in January. Obviously, I did not attend, but the pictures that I saw were just precious and everybody looked like they had a great time. So, thanks again for their efforts. Kudos to the Parks and Rec Department and specifically Dan McMinn for, Dan who's the Parks and Rec Department Senior and Events Coordinator, for a fantastic 2019 Winterfest. The pet, I did attend the Winterfest. It was incredible. The, first of all, the weather was perfect. Everybody had been cooped up for days and we had sunshine and it was so well-attended. Petting zoo, ice skating rink, ice sculptures, the bouncy, like, everybody had a smile on their face and a good time was had by all. So, thanks again, Parks and Rec for that and Dan McMinn. Parks and Rec is running a mid-winter break camp, February 18th and 19th. You can sign up online, in-person at the Parks and Rec office, on the phone. But, sign up if you want to get in on that because I'm sure that's going to fill up too. There's also a whole slate of other activities and opportunities starting this month, excuse me, at Parks and Rec. And again, you can sign up as I've indicated. Also, there are some great senior trips and I know that Teresa mentioned tonight, what a good time that couple had and enough, a good enough time for them to have written a thank you note and that's really an expression of a really incredible time. Councilmembers Gavin, Blanchard and I were able to attend the Off to the Races fundraiser from, put on by the Berkeley Education Foundation and that was Saturday evening. So, we had a really good time then. You know, spent some money, didn't win anything, had a cocktail and just saw a lot of residents and friends and everybody enjoying themselves. So, thanks so much to the Berkeley Education Foundation for putting on such a great event.
Done. Councilmember Henon?
With the Tree Board, right now, they are looking for grant opportunities to help with funding different tree projects. They're also considering the feasibility of conducting a tree survey through the city. This would be of the public trees so we know what we have and the relative health so we can track over time and see how we're doing and, you know, as we increase things. Then, we also have statistics on this past season's tree activity. There were 300 trees pruned, 101 were removed, but 120 new city trees were planted. So, we're coming ahead of where we were. If you've ordered a tree, it's in unless, should be in, unless you have a cosa dogwood and those will be planted in the spring. The Tree Board's next meeting is on Monday, February 17th, or Monday, February 11th at 7:00 p.m. at the library. Then, the Environmental Committee, they, just before their previous meeting, received the initial draft of the city's new energy plan. So, they're starting to review that and give their feedback to the city on that. This is looking at the city buildings and see what improvements we could do to help with energy efficiency in those buildings, both, you know, low-hanging fruit and maybe longer-term capital needs and how we might be able to fund those sorts of things. They're also preparing to assist with the master plan. So, their next meeting is on Thursday, February 28th at 6:30 in the Public Safety Building. Thank you.
Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Very quickly, Coolidge Task Force met, mostly centered, discussion centered around the actual, the road diet, kind of a breakdown similarly of the metrics, a communications plan about how best to get the word out, you know, survey created, you know, sharing it with the Citizens Engagement Committee, messages on social media, a whole host of discussion topics. ZBA also met on January 14th, a discussion about whether to grant a variance to allow Green Lantern to add outdoor seating. There was a motion postponed to give the applicant a little bit further time to look at potential shared parking as a possibility. The next meeting is February 11th at 7:00 p.m. The Planning Commission met on January 22nd, continued and we saw a little bit of what they spoke about here tonight with the design overlay district. And then, they started sort of the 30,000-foot view of the master plan update with further discussion to come at the next meeting on February 26th at 7:30. And I would also like to act with the comments of Councilmember Dean about the Berkeley Education Foundation event. It was a lot of fun. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to start with two thank yous. First, to Teresa and her staff. Winterfest was just a phenomenal hit. We had a blast. My soon-to-be four-year-olds loved it. They got to ride a unicorn, they got to skate, they went to bed early. So, we all, we're all really, really happy with the way that went. And then, also want to thank our DPW as well. You know, when, when most of us got the opportunity to be cooped up or to go home early or to just kind of avoid the cold, that, those crews were out, they were doing their jobs, they were making sure the rest of us didn't have to deal with a lot of the issues that they were having to deal with. So, whether it was water main break, whether it was snowplows, they were out there, they were doing the work. So, they're great crews, smile on their faces, all just extremely dedicated group and I can't thank them enough for all that they do. And then, finally, I have a chat with Matt coming up on the 27th, that's at 6:30, right here in this room. And so, I look forward to having a bunch of people come in and we kind of chat about kind of the state of things and some great ideas and some, share some innovations. These are really, they're a lot of fun to do. It's always good to have face-to-face conversations, social media's fine, emails are fine, calls are fine, but it's great putting names to faces. So, invite everybody to come out if they're able to on the, at 6:30, right here in this room on the 27th. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Attorney?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I want to remind everybody about the Town Hall on February 19th from 6:30 to 8:00. That is on recreational marijuana. So, the survey is live right now. So, you have an opportunity to respond. Actually, you can respond to the survey all the way up through February 26th. So, if you're not able to attend the town meeting, at least you'll have the opportunity to respond via the survey online. I also want to thank the Parks Department, all the volunteers, the businesses and everybody that helped make Winterfest such a great day. It was actually the perfect weather. It was a great day to build snowmen, to be outside, the smores, the unicorns. Wasn't too cold, it was nice, everybody seemed to really enjoy it and I thought it was very well-attended. I didn't take count, but it just seemed like it was very, very, very packed and that's great. People wanted to get outside, they wanted to do something and that was a perfect escape. I also, as mentioned earlier, but I do need to thank the Berkeley Junior Women's Club. I was able to attend the daddy-daughter dance this year. There was some sort of snafu last year, I don't, I don't really recall what it was, but at any rate, I wasn't able to attend. My daughters were not happy. But, we did go this year and because they were unhappy with me last year, I embarrassed them this year with my pretty fancy moves. Doing a little flossing out there, there's some other weird things, but it was, it was a great event and for them to be able to pack three of those in and three of the mother-son and get all of those things in is awesome. It's just, again, those are great times, those are times that your kids certainly will remember, even if it's because you embarrassed them, they're going to remember they were there and that it was an event in the city and that means something. And DPW and Public Safety want to thank them for the incredible job that they had to do over the vortex week here and making sure one that we were safe, helping residents that were in need and just to continue to do the business of the city despite the temperatures and the fact that it wasn't really safe to be outside. At some point, some people had to be. So, I certainly appreciate everything that they do and were able to continue to do and hopefully on Tuesday night into Wednesday, we do not get the ice storm that we are at least expecting to get right now. And if we do, we'll get the salt trucks out very quickly. Too bad we can't hook dumper the salt trucks. But, we'll take care of it. Our DPW continues to do a tremendous job, making sure that our roads and sidewalks in the city are safe for our residents. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. So moved. Well, moved by Mayor Proton with support from Councilmember Dean, who's a senior ranking member. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?